That'll happen one day.
Okay, we're ready?
Yep.
Okay, okay, we'll call this meeting back to order at this point in time. Okay, and I believe we're, I've been instructed, we're gonna start a discussion, an accident item, we'll rocket forward, discussion on the continuing services contracts. Go ahead, Ms. Ford.
So gentlemen, I want to start off by saying, look, I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything. But it was brought to my attention, the way we do our RFQs and the way we do our engineering. One of the complaints I had was that we don't have but a couple of engineering companies on a continuing service contract. So we don't have anyone to negotiate with if we don't do an RFQ for every project. We have one engineer on staff that does road work, we have one engineer on staff that does basically landfill work. And then we have a few others that are contracted for certain projects on certain areas, way I understand it. I think, well, and second of all, we haven't really advertised for continuing service contracts or anything, for RFQs for that in a while, in certain areas, 2013, I think, was the last one for one of them, so. Anyway, what I'm getting at is, it's been brought to my attention that we probably need to re-advertise for RFQs for engineering services. And try to get more than one staff or one company with a continuing service contract. So we do have some negotiation powers. Now, if we do an RFQ for each project, we do that. But if we don't do an RFQ, if we just use somebody that's already contracted for that, oh, we're basically bound to that, to that engineering company. Oh, that's what it's plain to me, and Joel, David, if I'm saying something wrong, y'all correct me. I've talked to you about this and talked to Kevin about it, too. And so my recommendation would be to send out some new RFQs. And try to get more continuing services contracts. And the second thing that the complaint was about was the way we rank, or when we do do RFQs, the way we rank it. So basically, and I just wanted to say that, I don't know what this is, but it wasn't on the agenda, but we, well, we've just been passed out, so, anyway, oh, the way we rank it. So right now, a ranking committee is made up of county employees and our engineers, basically. I think a more fair way to do it, we have a planning and zoning board, we have an economic development board, we have a TDC board. And we have the chamber with BDC, which is basically contractors on the BDC. I think we should see if we could get a committee from those three boards and from the BDC and say, hey, who would like to be on our ranking committee? And we put their names in a hat, or, and do a blind draw. And just get three or four, five, however many you want to do for the ranking. That way you have an independent ranking board. And it was brought to my attention, well, you know, we got a county engineer, maybe the county engineer needs to be on each one of those ranking committees. I would agree with that, I think that probably would be right, and we do have a county engineer. But I just want to make it more transparent and more fair. You know, everybody thinks that, or not everybody, but a lot of people think we're already doing something under the table, looking something nefarious or whatever. And if there's anything we can do to change that, to make it more transparent and look like it's more fair, I'm all for that, and I think we should do that. And another thing that I think we should do is any contract we give for engineering, whether it be a continuing service contract or whatever, and they do, I think, unless it's a continuing service contract, I think if it's over $30,000, it should come before the board for approval. There's contracts done for engineering every day, or, you know, throughout the year in Columbia County, that we never, we never see it, so we have no idea about it. And then when it gets brought to our attention, we have no knowledge of it, until we see it, you know, or until we ask about it. So it would be my suggestion that if it's an engineering service and we're paying over $30,000 for it, it should come before the board for approval, any engineering service. Now, that's kind of what I want to discuss, and I want to get everybody to see what y'all's opinions on that is, and what your thoughts on that is. One of the things I have been told is probably gonna slow the process down a little bit. My answer to that was, how much slower can it get? Most time, we're waiting on something anyway to, to get, get something done, or get whatever, so. Oh, I don't see it slowing the process down more than a week, a week or two at the most, so. I just want to get, see what everybody's thoughts were on that.
Robert, did you hear something?
How frequently would you do things like that? I don't know who we'd ask that of, Mr. Kirby, or how frequently does that happen? Quick things that we have engineered?
All the time.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I need about five minutes.
Before, Kevin, if you don't mind, start off with, explain this paper that y'all just sent down?
Yes, sir, I sent it down. If I can lead into it, I'd appreciate it, Commissioner. Mr. Chair, if I could lead into the paper?
Yes, sure, okay.
I take a different view on what we're doing here today. Call it retaliation, call it diversion, I'm not sure. But back in April, I questioned exactly what was said, whether it be an RFQ, an RFP, a continuing service contract, the hiring of a former senator as it relates to utilities. To my knowledge, I've not got an answer, yes, I'm still unclear of how that individual got on the payroll for around $75,000. What you have in your packet is answers to our question. The first page, we reviewed multiple counties. Everybody we talked to, with the exception of Swanee County, does a review exactly like we do it today. That's your first page. Your second page, I went back a decade. And I don't like the only limit to engineering, and I'm not the attorney, I control continuing service contracts in totality, just like hiring the term out senator, it's a consultant. We spent roughly $19 million in 10 years. No question about it, NFPS got $6 million of 19 million. You'll see on that second page, all these continuing service contract vendors. I want to remind this board, when it comes to transportation in particular, you have three local firms that are full time with offices, or without. You have Carol Chadwick, who's a one man show. You have Brian Pittman and his daddy. You have Greg Bailey with NFPS, 50 some odd employees, with 20 some odd professionals. Common sense tells you that's Walmart. If you're gonna stay local, you can go out of town. So no doubt about it, six of 19 million over a decade. Go to the next page, we captured the last half a dozen projects we did. Here's the percentages NFPS has charged us. He is your RFQ guy for transportation. We'll get into landfill in a few minutes. Six, 10, 11, 14, 5, 9, there's your percentages. Reached out to F-Talk right down the street. Let's take a look at the next page, what they're paying on the same type of projects. I mean, I think the numbers are self-explanatory. Kick on down to the next page, once again, I'm not limiting down just to engineering. You're building your dog pound business, you know, we never intended to do in that. Right now, we're using Mr. O'Neal. We've talked about a few weeks, I dispute that. Your concrete contract, your country club road, if you'll follow these processes, now, once again, gentlemen, I get paid the same, but you will significantly slow down all of this. At the dog pound, you'll go to architectural service, you'll go to engineering, you won't use creative concrete, you won't use Chum O'Neal. That's what you do today. Now, in my research, I've not found anything in a decade other than the utility stuff that I've seen that wasn't done up to the Florida statute. Florida statute clearly reads, up to $7.5 million, not to exceed $500,000 on the engineering aspect, or the consultant aspect, you're allowed to have continuing service contracts. There's a reason, I'm not smart enough to know why that reason is, but there's a reason they raised that ceiling a few years. Joel, correct me, it was three and a half million? Then it went to seven and a half?
Right, and then it's got an annual escalator.
An annual escalator. My comment is, is everybody's been through this before, or these rules would not have been initially began nor modified. Now, staff, I just want to echo what somebody said, want to go, I'm very confident that what we've done thus far is legal, moral, and ethical. And I think it's only common sense that after a decade of service, when you've got three local engineers, one with an excess of 20 or 25 professionals, and the other one, and the other one, two, it's reasonable to assume that firm's gonna get that kind of work. Let's go out to your landfill, you never hear about the landfill. If you'll go back to your next page, I think there were second rankings which paid in last decade. Of course you are. Now, out there at the landfill, the reason you never hear about it, there's so much institutional knowledge between those, you know, John worked under Frank for many years, then Frank retired, John wanted after him, Locklear. He has that institutional knowledge that we get ahead of things with EP, we've got relationships, they give us a heads up, we talk about expansions. To mix that up would be a logistical nightmare. It's legal, it's moral, and it's ethical. To put ceilings on, but, once again, it's real simple on staff side. We come in here, it's a process, it's a very slow, laborious process. But I think we need to really think this out, because I've been here a long time. And we're going to significantly change the way we do business moving forward. And I'm of the opinion that if we're going to go out to renegotiate, I believe we do it all, that you have time limits. You also established the policy about a year ago, that as long as your vendor did not exceed X amount of percent, and everybody's happy, then that's okay, too. So you've got policies in place, you've got time limits in place, and you've got all these windows you've already established. We vetted this, we've talked about it, your numbers in front of you show you've done a good job, you've not paid too much money. If one argues that it's nefarious, or not clean, we're doing it the way all of our other counties are doing it, okay? So I would strongly recommend to this board, in my opinion, I never heard this talked about in any magnitude until I stirred up that wolf's nest in April.
So you heard about what?
I'm sorry?
I couldn't understand the last word you're saying.
I have never heard this level of negativity as a result to this until I stirred up that wolf's nest in April.
A wolf's nest, you said?
Yes, sir.
When you questioned the, the part on the utility part?
Yes, sir, I questioned many things on the utility, and since then, it has been, yes, sir.
Okay.
So, so Mr. Kirby, is it your opinion that we should negotiate prices for engineering services?
We do.
We do?
We do. Yes, sir.
If I may?
So, so do you have any examples of where you have negotiated a price?
Yes, sir.
Other than when you send out an RFQ per project?
Let's, let's make sure we're talking about the same thing. If we're going on continuing service contracts, that's the first thing. On a continuing service contract, call it a trend, call it way, we do not co-mingle disciplines today. It's not a written rule, you've got your landfill engineer, you've got your transportation engineer, and for the record, NFPS, I mean, in my opinion, this is all about NFPS, I'll say it. NFPS, you just saw Kimbley Horn up here doing a presentation. You see another firm down there at Ellisville. I can show you as many RFQs or more the NFPS has lost than ever won. Now, it's for a continuing service contract. Frank DeRavi was out there for 30 years.
I'm talking about continuing service contracts, that's what I'm discussing.
Frank DeRavi was there for 30 some odd years.
You're going all over the spectrum here, I'm talking about continuing services contracts.
Okay, sir, you've had two engineers, one in the same, for 30 some years at the landfill.
That's landfill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
You had Frank DeRavi, John worked under Frank, upon Frank's retirement, Locklear took over in formality.
And that's all, landfill's like all one project.
I'm sorry?
Landfill is considered to me like all one project.
It is a continuing?
It's a continuing project.
But it is a continuing?
So that's kind of, that's kind of a different animal than bidding out or doing engineering on every road project in Columbia County, or?
No, sir, I disagree. You've got your day-to-day operations at landfill, you've got your expansions at landfill, you've got LEHA collection, LEHA detection, you've got studies. And for 30 something years, you've had one, partially two, one in the same firm do it all. Have I had phone calls through the years from other vendors saying, we want a piece of the landfill? Absolutely, yes, sir, including NFPS. And, or Bailey Bishop Lane back in the day, whatever you want to call them, I said, guys, it works, and it works well, okay? Let's don't disrupt the apple core. There is, you've got multiple faucets of continuing surface at the landfill. Now, when it comes to transportation on a continuing service contract, the reason I harp on local firms, whether it be NFPS or anybody else, it means a lot to me and my guys when we have a problem in the middle of a job. I'll give you the latest one, Ellisville, Florida. We bought some clay content down in Mr. Everett's district. Oh, my Lord, where did this come from? Contract immediately want to claim delay, that's where it works. It happened at 3:30, 4 o'clock, my guys called me, I called an engineer of record the next morning at daylight. The EOR was on the job, problem solved, avoided claim, you guys never hear about it. Sunday, I got lucky, didn't need engineering service. Think I'll open up Mr. Everett's district this weekend, Sunday, 10 o'clock. If I don't have the ability to spend more than $30,000, let me tell you how that would work. We'd close the highway down, we got lucky, we had boredom this week, might be two weeks. We'll come in here, we'll talk about it, we'll select it, we'll get approval, we'll kick the can down the road a month.
So that project, or you're, what you're discussing right there, then, that's it. That's a project already under construction with an engineering service already provided for that project, right?
Which project?
So you wouldn't change engineers in the middle of that project if something come up?
Which project?
The one you just talked about, where they found clay on the job. That project was already designed and in progress of building, and there was already engineer on the site?
Yes, sir, the point I'm trying?
That engineer had already been chosen for that project. That's what I'm saying, you're, you're mixing everything together here.
No, sir, I'm not. The continuing service contract, the reason I harp on local vendors, well, I just told you I had three. The advantage of having local vendors on a continuing service contract, I don't call Jacksonville, or Calo, or Orlando to have the EOR on the site the next morning, right down the street. There are many advantages, and what's confusing to me about all of this, I would understand it. If we looked down there and saw the percentages, 15, 18, 20, 22%, I'd say, okay, I understand what we're talking about. The evidence does not indicate that.
So what was brought to my attention was, this is exactly what was said. You might be getting the best deal in the state of Florida. It may be, but you don't know that, because you do, don't have anything to compare it to. Other than them, them numbers you got as far as percentages. What he's talking about is individual projects. When you get an RFQ with a price for individual, you, you don't have anything to negotiate with or compare it to. Because you don't have another price on that particular job. You're going by percentages.
You guys love it.
And on DOT, on DOT, there's a lot difference in designing a bridge across Blandy Boulevard in Jacksonville and paving a road in the middle of the country on?
So, so there's, no, no, I'm talking, there's a conflation of what's going on here, okay? So you have the CCNA, which was talked about, it was on the, you know, 287055. Two ways to pay for a project. If it's under $7 million, if it was in threshold, you can grab off the shelf one of your continuing service contract vendors, and you hand it to them. You cannot, it specifically says, firms providing professional services under continuing contracts may not be required to bid against each other. You don't negotiate price, period. You negotiate price when you do the RFQ, and you say, will you agree to be my continuing service contractor? Yes, I will. Then we go negotiate terms, you say, okay, this will be my hourly rate, these will be our services, this is what we'll do. It's your off-the-shelf contractor, right? So the first thing you do is you look at that project, is it under $7 million, is it within thresholds? If it is, yes, okay, we can, we're allowed to use the continuing service contract. If you want to find out, and I hear exactly what you're saying, Commissioner Ford, and you're right, you're, you're right. So you get the off-the-shelf pricing, and I think what Kevin's showing you, as a result of the off-the-shelf pricing, those ratios came out that way, right? They came out to 6%, sometimes, sometimes they were 11%, but you don't really know, because again, it's based on fixed pricing that's within your continuing service contract. What you're talking about, Commissioner Ford, is, if I want to make sure I'm getting the absolute best competitive price for that project, then you are going to have to bid it, right? And that's the only way you're going to reach that point. Because you're not allowed, under a continuing service contract, to say, hey, I've got three contractors, y'all all come in the room, I got this project, who's gonna give me the best price? The statute specifically says you can't do that, right? If you want to have continuing service contract, you got to use it like a continuing service contract. Now, another point the commissioner made, that, that I've kind of talked about, you're right, I don't, when's the last time we did this? When's the last time we opened up our continuing service contracts to let them be re-let, to go ahead and renegotiate? Because, I'm sorry? 10 years ago. So it could be, you know, and it sounds to me, Commissioner, and you don't have to divulge, you're talking, it sounds like you're talking to somebody who'd like to compete for some of this business. And that's fair, that's fine. If you want to allow for that, that would be the thing to do. Let's reopen our continuing service contracts, let's allow people to come in and bid, let's let them make their best offer, or let them show us they're qualified. I do want to say, if we open it up, we need to say, we're looking for three contractors, we're looking for four contractors, whatever that would be. The process under the CCNA, because I feel like I confused everybody, because when I talked about this last meeting.
And it is confusing, so, it took me a little while, and I don't know if I fully understand it.
No, 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 I, I was talking to these guys after, I said, I feel like I made some, caused some confusion. You rank based on qualification, RFQ, right, RFQ, or RFP, I want to look at your proposal, I want to look at your call, that's all I'm looking at. You're actually not allowed, the, the CCNA actually says, don't ask about price until you get past the selection phase, right? You're not even supposed to ask. You will identify at least three, okay? Your committee's gonna help you figure out ranking, you will off, you approve those rankings. At that point, we go to number one, we negotiate. We don't move to number two until we're done with number one, right? So if you say, I select, I want three. If we can reach a deal with number one, we check off number one, we go to number two to try to fill the, fill the second slot. If we can't finish something up with number one, they say, I want $100 million, well, we're not gonna do that, so you're out. Now, we're going to number two, trying to fill that number one slot, right? You can go all the way through 20 vendors that way. But once you impasse with a vendor, if I impasse with number one, I can't make a deal with you. They're gone, they're out, they're done for that solicitation, they don't come back unless we resolicit. I think I caused confusion last time, because I made it sound like you could circle back.
Right, yeah.
You can circle back to them if you've decided to use them, right through the negotiation process. Okay, you're locked in, this is gonna be your deal, now they're on deck, and they're one of those contractors that's on the shelf. The reason you go ahead and get these continuing service contracts is, you know, okay, I've got this sub $7 million project, I've got three guys on the shelf, these are the contract prices they've already given me. I, excuse me, I happen to know that this particular firm has an engineer with that discipline that's really good at that deal. You're not really, you are controlling who the work goes to, but you're not controlling how much they get paid, you're not controlling how much work it's necessarily gonna be. They're just off the shelf at a negotiated rate. So the reason, and Kevin is right, I don't think any of us are necessarily smart enough to understand exactly why it's structured this way, but you can understand why that's nice, right? I can pull it off the shelf, I know that's what its rate is gonna be, I know these are the people, his qualifications have been vetted, this guy's ready, and you guys have approved that, right? So even though you're not approving that particular project, you have approved that contractor at that rate. So if we're gonna use continuing service contracts, you kind of have to let them be and let them be what they are. And if you want to say, I want any study over, you know, we already have to do it, if it, if it breaks $7 million, if it breaks a half million, we already have certain things we have to bid, but you could lower that and say, state says we can do up to $7 million, but I don't like that. I don't want a continuing service contract signed if it's, you know, over, over $1 million, it's over $2 million. There's things you can do to modify the statute to make it more restrictive, you can't make it more permissive, because the statute sets the outer parameter. But I think we got to be careful, what we're talking about here, the statute says you can't mismatch, you can't create your own little Frankenstein's monster. Once you have them under a continuing service contract, you can't make them bid against each other, period, for that, for, for a particular project. You can go out to a regular RFQ, right, regular RFP, and one of your continuing service contract vendors could bid for that. They're not prohibited from bidding, it just won't be subject to their continuing service contract. This is a very complicated subject, there's a, excuse me, there's a ton of moving parts. I think we just have to be real careful when we talk about what our objectives are. Can we even get there, right? Can we even reasonably get there if we're gonna continue to use continuing service contracts? Now, you are not required to use continuing service contracts, we could throw them out, and then we'd have to bid everything.
Something you said, what, what do count, what is the limit?
Seven million.
It's seven million, so, and, and?
That's for the whole state of Florida.
Every, yeah, that's the statute.
Everybody.
So, but, but I understand that, too, you can't do creative accounting beyond that seven, you know what I'm saying? Like, if it's a $14 million project, you can't say, oh, Like if it's a fourteen million dollar project, you can't say, oh, we'll split it in two. We'll say, we'll do this phase and this is only seven million.
There's estimated mouse on.
If the project is that it is, and the other thing is, if you decide you want to go, there are certain thresholds below which you don't have to bid, right? You've got category two and category five. If you go into that bidding, if you go into the quoting process, right, you reach out, say, hey, I don't think this is over, you know, category five. Well, you get a response from the vendor that suggests it is, now you're obligated to bid it, right? So you're not, you're never allowed to turn a blind eye to reality. And Kevin understands this. I mean, projects are what they are, right? We used to, I think years ago, try to engage in, we're going to do this phase and it'll be this much money. We can't do that anymore. We don't do that.
Let me ask you something, Joe, while you're doing this, and I'm fresh, when you get through, I forget what I'm asking. Do you, so the continuing, the list of people, what do you call them?
Continuing contract.
Your continuing service contract. You're whatever. And they're, they have a ranking, like you rank them from, I mean, to be on your continuing service contract, is there a ranking of them? So you go from the one that has more employees or this or that, I mean, is that?
That's going to be, that's going to be governed by your solicitation, and I think that's where Commissioner Ford's point is. Is in 2015, we did that, right? We're like, hey, we need so many, right? Well, once you have them all signed up, they're not ranked, right? They're just, those are the three on the shelf.
Right.
They're ranked in terms of filling the position. So you say, I've got three spots, I need three vendors. And that's where you figure that out. But I think what, I think what Commissioner Hollingsworth is asking is, once they're on the shelf, do they continue to be ranked? No, now they're just on the shelf. I've got three available to me. You could do rotation systems. What you probably would like to do, what I would encourage the board to allow staff to do, is select based on discipline, right? So Locklear, for example.
What they know about it. To me, if somebody that's done it.
Guys, he's talking about scope of service.
No, I'm talking about discipline.
I'm talking about somebody like, he was talking about the landfill. You got a guy that's always done a landfill.
Let me use, now lawyers, we have a better, we have better lobbyists than the engineers do. We don't got to do this at all. But the engineers have worked it out, right? So, but using me as an example, when utilities got real hot, what did I do? Guys, that's not my thing. Go get a utility, right? I think most engineers are that way too, right? This is not my thing. Like, and so Locklear and his predecessor, Dr. Robbie, they did landfills, like that was their thing, that was their, and they don't do other stuff for us, right? That's what they do.
And they know all about that landfill, our landfill.
I mean, I mean, I mean his dad. Well, for us, for us, Frank, Frank and then John have been our landfill guys. We may have other situations, but I think what you want to let is for staff to decide based on what those disciplines are within those particular firms. You know, here's my three on the shelf, this one worked really well, you know, for the utilities guy. They've got good utilities engineers in there, let's send that over there. That's why you have these continuing service contracts. So those guys are on the shelf, their prices are locked in, their terms are locked in. You pull them off, you put them on a job and you move on. Rather than going through a full procurement, which can take weeks and then the work itself can take.
Kevin? I wanted to echo what Joe said. In Columbia County, we have a tendency to limit disciplines. You take Swatting, Hamilton County, John's one size shoe fits all. He does transportation, does lack of garbage, he does law. We don't do that here. That's what I want to emphasize. Our way has worked a long time. We keep everybody in what I call their travel lane. It's not written down, but if you look at the history of it, we staff, I say, guys, stay in your lane, right? That's why we do mostly transportation work. Irregardless of who your continuous service contractor is, he's going to get the lion's share of engineering because transportation's what we do so much of. Now, I'm not here to argue, I didn't realize it's been over fifteen since we went out, it's time to go out, it's time to go out. But I want to emphasize, guys, besides basketballers, what, fifteen years ago, we had a claim? Am I thinking right? Is that the last time we've had a construction claim?
It's less than that, but yeah, I mean.
Look at the millions of dollars. Tell me the last time we've been fined at the landfill. Tell me the last time I've been in here negotiating a claim with attorneys and the boards. Guys, our way works.
And don't you think, Mr. Kirby, sometime, just like me and my business, I have certain people I use for certain things. And I know they know what they're doing, they know me, they're my people. So when you, when you hire somebody like, that's been there for thirty years, doing however many years he has for us. He knows all the people and all the, he's just more efficient than any other person can be. It's just the way it is because he knows our landfill back and forth. And obviously, there's other counties that ain't done real good with their landfills and that might be, you know, they might not add a continuing service contract with a good one. So, I mean, it's one of those things. I feel like, I don't mind going out doing whatever y'all are talking about, but I do understand the familiarity thing. When you call a guy that you know, and he knows you, and he knows all you people, he knows, I see where that could. No other, no new contract, no new guy's going to be able to come in and do that right off the bat.
Mr. Chair, I have one thing, and I'll be quiet. We talked about RFQs. Joel indicated you don't discuss price upfront. So when a guy throws a RFQ, let's just use John. Locklear. And he shows all this history and all the personnel he's got, of course, the person looking at the RFQs will look at that and say, wow. That's your guy, that's just common sense. If you look up the NFL team, you see five All-Star players, there's your team. So when you look at a firm that's got twenty-some odd professionals of every discipline there is, through the geo-work, transportation, this and this and this, of course, that's going to be a major part of when you look at that ranking. Now, to conclude, if we're talking about going statewide and looking at huge firms, that's a whole different conversation. But when you look at local firms, it's hard to compete when you see X amount of folks that have all these letters by their name that do X, Y, Z.
I like using local firms, I do like.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also want to emphasize, it's not just, there's one RFP that selected continuing services. We've done several different ones and selected different firms for different things. So for instance, we did an RFP for engineering services related to planning and zoning. And we selected a firm to do that continuing service. We did an RFP, or an RFQ rather, for engineering services related to North Florida mega industrial park and apartment system. And awarded it to a certain firm. So it's not just, I don't want people to think that you're just one contract. It's not. I mean, depending on your need and the firm you pick depends on the scope of service that's in the RFQ that you issue.
But those, but those contracts are specific to certain things, right, David?
They're specific to the scope of service that was in the RFQ.
Right.
Relevant to the grant too.
Right. So that's what Joel was saying, you do it, if you're going to do it, you do it by discipline, so you have a specific scope of service, so you know who you're looking at. And then you're evaluating those firms based on that scope of service. It's not just a blanket cross-board thing.
Exactly. You know, the continuing services contract, I think it's a necessity. I think it keeps, quote, the ball rolling. And Tim Murphy's on North the Doc Way about doing things. I did reach out to other counties and talk to other engineers or what have you, just to see the differences. The numbers that we're looking here as far as percentages, I did not, I have not seen this paper until this little while ago. But I will say that these numbers somewhat, I don't have my notes in front of me, but it's consistent, I'll say that. I'll give, Kirby or whoever come up with this, I'll give them that credit. But my point is, is that, and I've barked about this for nine years now. We can go in there and negotiate, we cannot, as Joel said, Kirby and everybody, we cannot go in there and negotiate that dollar. But we are not in control of the negotiation. I've said that nine years ago and I say it today. You can put time limits on it, this, that, another, that puts you into moving to another person. I didn't realize fifteen years, this is, I agree with Robbie, and I got to pick on Greg because me and Greg go back a long ways. But I got Greg doing, he's doing a personal job for us at the fairgrounds right now, doing a good job. And, you know, we handpicked him, but we couldn't do that. But my point is simply this, is that this is taxpayers' dollars. It does need to be looked at earlier than fifteen years of spread. And I'll be frank, when I got my feet dug into this, is when I come across the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar vulnerability study. That ain't going to happen no more. When you even got to that conversation. But the, that's why you need these other engineering firms, if you want to say, that can be given stuff like that. I'm not saying North Florida doesn't get that project there. I'm just that they're saying that there's got to be, Joel, in the three counties, I'm not going to put them on the spot. But three counties do a revolving when it comes to vulnerability aspects, the stuff that we just rejected with DEP the other day. And them type, they call it the gravy on the mashed potatoes, is what the engineering world calls it. And so, and there's nothing wrong with that, there's nothing wrong with that. Because when you look at some of these numbers, and I, in a negotiating standpoint, I would argue this right here. How on God's green earth, if Queens or Winfield, of all that mess out there, get a six point three two percent? And then, you know, yeah, go ahead, Ken.
So in an effort of transparency, and too bad for whoever did that one. So this was a time of inflation. So you had an estimate on the job. We went, added the job coming in like forty percent more than it did. So if, remember that, all that big adjustment? So at the time, we got the quote to do the estimate for the engineering services job was down here. COVID hit or whatever you call all that business, price went up here. That's why it looks skewed. It would have been at that.
See, that's another question I have right there. Hold on just a minute. That's a question I have right there. So every one of these contracts I see is by the hour. Now, I don't know what NFPS is, because I, I can't even find the price sheet in there nowhere. I don't know if there even are one. I don't know, but if it is, it's not on our website. And nobody can find it. Nobody's produced it for me anyway. Of course, that's an old, that's an old contract. But I haven't even found a, I don't even know what they bid on in there, how much they bid. Because, but now all the rest of them have an hourly price sheet. So if they have an hourly price sheet, how do they bid the job by percentage if they have an hourly price sheet? See, that's another question that just baffles my mind. How do you go by percentage if you got an hourly price sheet?
And I'm not exceed.
No, you go ahead.
I mean, so, right, so, so that's the purpose of the percentages. So when you go in, I'll use the term number not to exceed. So they give estimates, you got your junior engineer, your senior engineer, you got this technician, this technician. If this is what they're worth per hour in our opinion, and we think we can do, I'm just going to use a number. We think we can do the job for a million dollars on a ten million dollar job or ten percent. For lack of a word, what you're agreeing to, well, you put all them hours together all you want, at the end of the day, you're not going to exceed ten percent of the gross cost of the job, right? So the thing I'm trying to drive home, gentlemen, is if the politics of things, say we need multiple engineers, that's a conversation stands by itself. If the conversation is that something's been done nefarious or a more illegal unethical, that's not true, okay?
And nobody's suggesting that. We're just suggesting the process, how we do it, was brought up the question and I've started trying to understand it.
Right.
And that's all, that's all this discussion is about, is I want everybody, even the audience, to understand how we do this. Because this is a very complicated process, I can tell you.
Commissioner, I made notes when you were talking, make sure we hit everything. So you had talked about contracts coming back to the board for review as an alternative. When you guys get your quarterly capital projects update, if it was reported to the board, these are the engineering firms that got assigned. Would that kind of be a compromise? Because I think if we do the thing where you got to approve them, it's going to slow things down, that way everybody's still moving with speed, but you're still getting an update. So you can see the distribution of work and you'll have an idea, and that way you can have some feedback.
And the cost, the distribution of costs.
All of it, right? So this road got assigned to that engineer, this road got assigned to that engineer. And that way you can have a better, because I do sympathize with the board, you don't like it when you're approached by constituent. I have no idea they got assigned that job.
And that's why I was at, I had no idea what to tell you. I had no idea we've spent this money, you know what I'm saying?
So the two issues that I think we've addressed so far were the fact that there were only a couple of engineers on the continuing service contract. Is that the, and we are in discussion and action, would the board like to have staff put together a proposed RFQ to go back out to bid?
And I think it needs to come back to this board, because I simply say this, because Kevin, I mean, educated me on this. You can put these projects, I mean, these RFQs together in such a way towards that they got a response time. And I, you know, I'm not going to beat up on three counties, but three sitting county engineers, absolutely. There's not a contract we got out here that lasts twenty-four hour response. It don't make a damn if you can keep away from Florida. You're going to be here twenty-four hours, or you're done.
So to your point, and I think that's what I'm saying, if you want to direct staff to go ahead and get the RFQ pulled together, we'll bring it in and pull it apart in the boardroom. Because I do think, and one of the reasons continuing service contracts work, you're setting the bar at Jump Street, right? When that RFQ goes out and you're saying, we're looking for at least three engineers that can do all these things. If you don't put those things in there, then they're not part of, right? So we've got to make sure that RFQ is right, because that's going to dictate your contract.
And what Kevin said about workload right there, you could have a firm simply to the fact that they're loaded down with so damn much work. And well, these restrictions ain't going to work in my timeframe where I'm at.
They may not be interested.
And simply go about that there.
And I'll be honest with you, I had one of the engineer firms that I talked to told me, we would love to be a bid process. We would love to be able to do a bid process. We feel like we would even get more work, you know, if we had a bid process, if we could do it through a bid process. So the engineers are not afraid to bid the work. They're, they're willing to compete for the work. Oh. But the process, the way we have to do it, I think is, well, I'll be honest, I think it's a flawed process. I don't know how it even come about, but.
The scope of work will drive what that contract says.
Say again?
The scope of work in the RFQ will drive that contract.
Right.
I agree, I agree.
And I mean, I kind of, I kind of realized why this came about, because the counties probably all got together, talked to states, and look, we got to have a way of getting stuff done. And we're not able to do that, having to do, you know, bids every time, you know what I mean? If it's under a certain amount of money.
We do the Robbie's bid out.
Yeah, on a lot of stuff, but I mean.
Once we get the job engineers, we bid the job out, so.
I think the seven million across the board for the whole state of Florida, I think we got sucked up in that. Because I could see seven million, I mean, I could see three million, I'm just throwing a number out here, being a big problem in Dade County, Florida.
Yeah, yeah, I don't even know how seven million works in Dade.
I'm going to call it the little local, we got sucked into it too. But, you know, but there's a lot of laws that take place in Tallahassee, they don't ever consider small rural counties like us. But I'm a hundred percent convinced that continuing contracts are a necessity. And when I reached out to Kevin, and he said he had no problem with it, but you know, we do, you know, their monthly capital projects update. And a quarterly, in my opinion, would be fine. And, you know, because there's transparency there as far as on the report, is where it comes back. But on that four hundred and fifty thousand dollar vulnerability study, that being you had the discussion about, there was no transparency there whatsoever. And, you know, and as I told you, you know, I got the call from a firm, I didn't get the call from a, you know, one of the board members or nothing like that. Go ahead, Ken.
Mr. Chair, throwing this out there to hit common ground. On staff's side of things, if the board could agree that anything outside of what I call day-to-day projects, vulnerability studies, that purr, that weird stuff. Guys, y'all don't hire an engineering firm, I don't care if it costs one dollar for studies like that without coming to front as board. I don't think staff, we don't, that's easy. Milling and paving so expensive anymore, just milling and paving four, five hundred thousand dollars a mile anymore. That's construction, new construction, a million and a half a mile just for construction. Hell, let's take the seven million down to four or five million. If you can do it for four or five million, do it under a continuing service contract with the understanding, once a quarter, when I come up here and advise you a capital project update, you add a sentence that says, okay, project X is worth four million dollars. The engineering service was performed by a company X at four hundred thousand dollars. You're informed, you know about it, you've excluded them weird studies, the board always knows about them upfront. Use your continuing service contractor, make the can, go down the road fast. I mean, I'm good with four or five million, you know, four million, call it four million. Anything, even if the statute says seven, say anything above four million, go to RFQ. That's easy enough.
But I remember something you shared with me a long time ago, anything we can save on the front end, we can always do whatever, you know, you don't get in trouble. Remember when I first got here paving that little strip of road?
Right, so that's, this reminds me a lot. I never get little strip of road. So the board at that time formed a policy that said I cannot go off the project limits without board approval paving a job. Well, we just don't do that no more, and we miss out on all kinds of opportunities. Because when the contractor's right there and I got a little dirt road I can reach and pave, like we used to, I got to live by a policy. That window's gone. That's why you don't ever hear about it, is it killed ourselves.
But while we're in this process, if I may say, Rocky sparked my interest there as far as the evaluation. But while we're in this process, if I may say, Rocky sparked my interest there as far as the, uh, uh, the evaluation process. Let's try to put something together and look at that. I mean, I've never thought about these other, uh, you know, because you're saying everything's pretty well done right under one roof here. And I, I, that's a, that definitely brings a different, it brings transparency to it.
So I have one more question for Kevin. So you just quoted numbers for mile for this and that and whatever. If we know all this and we, and that's what we go by, how do these jobs come in a million dollars over budget? I mean, back to the dollars come in a million dollars over budget.
Exactly.
I mean, that's just.
When you open up projects today, uh, Commissioner Parnell, if you recall phase one of Boss Road, we did phase two right back to back, was fifteen, twenty percent variance.
It was.
Per, per, per unit item, if they're hungry or not.
It's crazy. And then, and, and my little research, it's in every single county that I talk to. Every single county I talk to, you know, and that's, uh, it's, it's, it's off the chain. It really is off the chain. And then the mechanical side of the world, we're experiencing a lot of that stuff too right now. Mostly because of the quote tariffs. I think a lot of people are hanging their hat on that too right now, you see.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I also don't want to give the public the false impression that all we do is continuing services contracts.
I don't know.
The vast majority of our contracts are not continuing service contracts. We go out to bid all the time. We have evaluation committees. Those committees propose their ranking to the board. The board approves their ranking and then we negotiate the contracts.
But now.
So the continuing services is only a small section of the projects in which the county does.
Okay, but just for clarification, David, not put words in your mouth, but we don't go out to bid.
We go out to qualification.
Depending on the project.
Okay.
Some projects we go out to bid on. So I'm saying when continuing, with the continuing services, R F Q is only a small part of the work that we do. Most of the work we do is R, is R F Ps on big construction projects. I mean, look at any agenda that we have, you see R F Ps constantly coming before the board. I don't want the public to think everything's done through continuing contracts. They're not. That's just a small portion of the work that we have to do as a county.
Right. Well, and there's some good things, there's definitely good things in these contracts on the negotiating side. Clint educated me the other day, you know, when, when I had signed off on them contracts there, I didn't understand that part at the bottom. But, you know, in Clint's defense or whoever, you know, come up with that, it's like, don't know that you need this service, but I'm locking in a dollar today. That, that, that was pretty cool. I thought that, that made a lot of sense.
And in Clint's project, that was an R F P that came to the board that said, our engineering services to design the five hundred acres. That was not a continuing contract.
That's right.
And Mr. Chair, if I may.
Not to cut you off, Kevin, but that right there is where I think Mr. Ford's saying the, the, the difference in structure of ranking then, you know, could be a prey there. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, so take for example a sink over the open up Sunday.
Yep.
We have a continuing service contract with Jimmy Moon, for example. Now, we were looking up, we were handling the house. They were real busy. That's the luxury of calling Jimmy. Jimmy, go take care of it. We got a contract with him. That is your luxuries. And to validate what David said, absolutely, I would say the vast majorities of our projects go up R F Q, R F P. I know it's more than half versus continuing service contracts.
And in that situation right there, that could have turned into a D E P issue real quick.
Sure.
You know, I mean, you know, so that's a.
And a public safety issue.
Yeah. And the, uh, well, you know, I, I keep going back to Sister Welcome Road every time we have a, an event, you know, we, we got Caltech or somebody along that line out there having to make sure the fairytale fix and collapse on me.
Good, good example. There, there, Caltech, continuing service contract is so easy when we bump into clay or whatever we're doing. You pick the phone up, hey, run proctors, run standards, run modified. It's just easy. If you don't have that luxury, if you follow the protocol the other way, I don't know what timeframe you're talking about, but some are common sense supplies.
So what would y'all's process be? Reach out to Erica and then see if y'all need to revise?
But Kevin. If you direct us to go out and redo the R F Qs for continuing services.
If I, with, with Caltech though, we have a contract with them a price per, whatever they're doing. I mean, we know what they're going to charge us pretty much when we call them. You know, a, a, that's my point with most of our continuing service contract. We know what creative concept is going to charge us per dollar for concrete, but he doesn't, he doesn't go. We know if he's going to pour modern in on their concrete. We know what that price is going to be. That's in the contract.
But, but to your point, there's a great chance we could say, we're not going to use your continuing service contracts with dog kennels. Let's go out to bid and you could get a cheaper price. There's a great chance you could. But you weigh out that availability of having your own lawnmower versus going to hire it done, you can argue it ten ways to Sunday.
And you got to look at that, that particular animal out there, you know, we're under a timeframe. We're, we're burning thirty something thousand dollars a month right now and really for nothing. And, uh, so, you know, but there seems like, uh, there's definitely some more work we can do to kind of clean this thing up some, if you want to call it.
So, so the ranking committee that I brought up.
Oh, that's my bad.
The reason I brought this up, and I'll be honest with you, the reason I brought it up, I was handed two rankings. One was hydro acres, one was, uh, up off of, uh, Parnell Hills. Pretty much similar jobs, same three engineering companies, started RF Qs. Might have been four. I think it was four engineering companies. I don't have in front of me right now. Same three people ranked both jobs. North Florida was number one ranked for hydro acres. Uh, John Edmund was number one ranked for, for Parnell Hills. Question I put, question in front of me, how do you explain that? I don't know how you explain that. It's similar jobs, same three people ranked off all four firms. They come up with two different conclusions. So. And done at the same time.
So, it, it, and you're right, so the, the concept of ranking committees is, is totally subjective, right? So, um, you know, you have all these categories, you rank from zero to ten or from zero to fifteen or, you know, and, and, you know, Commissioner Ford's seven might be my nine, you know, whatever. And so we do rank based scoring. It's anticipated that they're kind of fluid and, and, and almost unknowable, right? Like, because this three, these three people, sort of like three judges out of court, you know? These three people might, might have it come out this way. I understand what you're saying, like very similar jobs, very similar time. Depends on how that person woke up that morning. I mean, that's how subjective it is, right? There's no legal, uh, uh, ramification to it. I think if I heard your suggestion, Commissioner Ford, and if I, and I'm going to throw something out there, you think there should just be a pool of people that gets randomly drawn from
Yes.
by Erica, right, and, and purchasing, but that there should always be at least one person on the committee who's a subject matter expert. So like Chad, if it's an engineering thing, me, if it's a legal thing, something like. It, it, is that fair to, like you, and then whoever wants to be in that pool who's willing to volunteer their time to participate, throws their name in the hat and they just randomly come up and they get told when to be there. Does, did I hear that correct?
That would be my suggestion. Now, if any other board members has some other idea, I just want to make it transparent and as fair as possible. That's all, that's all, that's all my goal is.
But as Joel said, at the end of the day, no matter who's on that ranking committee, it will be subjective.
Sure, they're always, and that's why they come to you guys, you know, for final adoption and approval of the rankings.
You know, and it's just like anything we do, we try to, if it, we run into a problem, you know, we fix it, you know, try to fix it anyway. But the, uh, but again, and then, of course, when y'all bringing this back, David, I would assume you're going to be the lead on it and, uh, you and Kevin, you know, you, you deal with your purrs and your vulnerabilities and stuff such as that, and then they bring that process back to us.
If, um, if it pleases the board, I'll work with Erica and management to try to draft a policy. Because obviously if, if you're one of the bidders, you can't serve on the committee. I mean, there'll be certain things we'll have to write up to say, you know, you can't serve in certain times and if you're interested in all that kind of stuff. But if you'll let me work, take a stab at that. If, if what I said is a fair reflection of what you're asking about, then we'll review it and bring it on another agenda.
Yeah, but the, but the, uh, again, the continuing services, I think it's just a necessity and it keeps the ball rolling. And it's just, uh, but you're going to have professionals or, uh, experts, if you want to call them, in that field. But that, and I'm just simply sharing, uh, you can call anybody I call it because it is. I was, I was convinced that this is a statewide, this is how to work, this is how the state works. You know, the communities that we deal with every day, but there's a lot to it, lot to it.
So Mr. Chair, Joe, let me make sure I understand. We're going to attack all continuing service contracts?
What are you talking about?
Just make sure it's all.
We, we have multiple continuing service contracts. I just said, John, we, we got a lot of continuing service contracts.
No, I understand. So I think the one, the one that was called out was the one that got bid in twenty fifteen that hasn't been bid in ten years.
Right.
So I think that's the one that y'all want to have rebid again, right?
I just don't think you should select one.
Yeah.
Because we got policies that says you can re-up.
Yeah, you're opening yourself up right there. Yeah.
Well, I still think it's a good idea to have Joel work with management and purchasing and look at it and come back.
Let, let, so.
Bring us back to your, your recommendation.
We, we know that you want that one that hadn't been relit, I heard that. Is that the consensus of the board, the one that hadn't been bid in ten years needs to be looked at at least? So why don't, why don't we work with Erica to get an R F Q together, what that would look like? I'll work with staff to get a report. Okay, here's all of our other continuing service contracts. And then we'll let you guys determine if there's any that you want to have rebid, because some of them may not have been bid that long. The, the planning one, I think, just got done within the last two years. So, you know, that, that may not, so, so if you'll allow us to do that study based on the input we've got today, I feel like we can skin this cat. It may take a little bit, a little while.
Again, I think material type continuing services contracts are different than service type.
Well, that's why I want to analyze them and give you a report. This is the kind of categories we have. This is what we have. The landfill contract, do you really want to dip into that, you know, with, with?
And that might be something we don't look at.
So I want, I want that to be an informed decision rather than just, you know, dropping a nuke on it.
Absolutely.
So if that's the pleasure of the board, I, I don't, I mean, Mr. Chair, I'll defer to you whether you want to take a motion to that effect, but I think I understand the direction.
I think it's clear direction.
I need no motion.
Wait, so wait, we're not, we're not slowing down services though, right? Like if, like you said on that decision with a road or anything like that, if something pops up and decision to be made, do we have to come back and?
Providing us a direction on what to bring back to you. I don't even know that it needs a motion.
Okay, alright.
But before we move on, I'll sing Greg move up, please Greg, come, uh, talk to us.
Thank you. Um, first off, I've heard N F P S mentioned a lot this morning.
Yeah, that's a good one.
I'm surprised y'all weren't a higher percentage of them.
Um, I want to say we've done a great job for the county. We've done an, an economic job for the county. I do have about fifty-five people, most of them here are Columbia County residents, so Columbia County is, is home to all of us. We want Columbia County to succeed. We want to succeed. I don't make the engineering selection rules. Those are what you provided. Joel's gone over those. I would like to comment a minute or two about that, but the, uh, your negotiation is basically between the engineer and the client. And if the client thinks the price is too high, they can, you know, come back and there's a back and forth. That's your negotiation. Negotiation is not, we're going to take N F P S and we're going to take Jones Edmonds and talk to them at the same time and get different prices. You can't do that. As Joel said, when you start with one, you can't reach an agreement, you go to number two. Now, if number two comes in less, that works great for you. But if you go to number, if you kick number one out and they're a hundred thousand, number two says, oh, we're at one fifty, you still can't go back to number one. Then you're stuck at the one fifty. So you got to understand that part of it too.
Say that again, Greg.
Wait, wait, wait a second.
They need to understand that.
You can't make them, you can't make them bid against each other.
From one to two?
Yeah, if you start.
Now, if we do this, no.
You don't have to.
He's telling you how it is now. He's telling you how it is now. What you can't do, I'm sorry Greg, I don't mean to step on your time. You can't do, I can't get Greg on.
Do negotiations.
I can't get, no, no, I can, I just, I can't bid, right. I can't say, hey Greg, what we.
Then it becomes a bidding process.
And then it's a bid. So what he's saying is if I go, if I say, hey, I want somebody who does, um, uh, utilities. Well, N F P S has a good utilities engineer. We want to use that firm. Kevin pulls it off the shelf, looks at it, says, Greg, what do you think this is going to be? And they bring back an estimate, say, we think it's a hundred thousand dollars. And Kevin says, that's a little rich for our blood. We'll let you know. He puts that one away and then he calls the next firm. Once he calls the next firm.
It's like opening up bid.
You're done. Well, because if you don't do it that way, remember I told you, you can't be creative and clever about this stuff? You can't say, oh, well, I know Greg will do it for a hundred. Let me call up and see if somebody else will do it for less. Once you tell Greg, no, you've told him no. So, and Kevin understands that dynamic. And, and, and again, I don't mean to step on your time, Greg. I just, it, it's very complicated. Wouldn't you agree?
It can be.
Can be.
So just, he, he's trying to simplify.
Um, but I, I wanted you to understand that, but yeah, bottom line is we do a good job. Um, if you're going to do it, I think you need to do it for all of it. I don't have a title as a landfill engineer. I don't have a title as a transportation engineer. My license says I'm a professional engineer. That's all it said. So, you know, if you're going to create a pool, then create a pool, but it needs to be created across the board. Not just pick out one particular area, in, in my opinion.
And that's the same opinion the guy approached me had.
So, yeah. Um, you know, you still may use, you know, if you were to do this and Locklear still gets it, then he may still be the guy you use most of the time, or he may be the guy you use all the time. But, you know, you do have the option if, if you're going to do that. And not segregated out, in my opinion, so, um, but I'll put our firm up against anybody else. A lot of people think because we're in Lake City, we're small and all that. Out of all the local firms, we carry more, uh, transportation qualifications than anybody else. Uh, D O T, you have to go through a process. We do D O T work, so, uh, we carry more D O T qualifications than any firm you have in town other than the big D O T firms that are here in town. You know, because I, I can look that up. I can check all that and I can confidently say that, so, but, you know, we're here to do a good job. We're here to take care of you and, you know, whichever way you go, we're going to keep doing that, so.
And I just want to add, just for, so everybody knows, clarification. I've used Greg and Phil for thirty years in engineering work. They're doing a project for me now or for my wife and, uh, I think they do great work and I have no problem keeping everything local. But at the same time, I want to make sure we have a transparent, fair process. That's the only thing I meant. I don't want to be accused of doing something under the table. And basically I was, so, you know.
Uh, one last thing, we don't bid on percentages. I, I didn't, I don't have what you have in front of you, but what it sounded like, the calculation was just a, a calculation that said this was the, this is what the engineering ended up costing you as a function of the construction cost.
That's right.
So we don't bid that way when we send you a task work order. It's got a dollar amount, tells you exactly what you're going to pay for what you get. And, and that ain't even true. I can tell you without a doubt, we give y'all more services than what we actually put down in our scope of work. We always have.
Always have.
And, uh, we'll always do that. Um, so, um, but as far as the percentages go, you know, that, that's the way, that's just the way it, it worked out. We try to be as efficient as we can. We try to, we try to cut out as much red tape, if you will. Uh, when you deal with some of these state agencies, they have a lot of red tape built into it and, you know, you got to do what you got to do. But, uh, when it comes to these local projects, we try to make them as efficiently as possible. You know, my goal is, if it's a transportation project, to get as much asphalt on the ground as we possibly can. Uh, one of the other things, uh, I think one commissioner asked about, you know, these costs. One of the things I can tell you about the cost, and I, I preached this when Covid started. Y'all forget, but the federal government started printing money. And they put a bunch of money, y'all got a bunch of money from, from the feds through the state. Problem with all that is all that work got put on the street. It ain't just Columbia County doing it, it's Swanee County, it's Baker County, it's Watchaw County, it's Hamlin County. All of them are putting these projects on the street. Guess what? We, we all of a sudden have a bunch more contractors come into town. Those contractors got loaded down. You've got liquidated damages assessed on your contract. Guess what those contractors did? Guess what those contractors did? They just said, all right, well, I'm going to be behind six months, I'm going to put down six months worth of liquidated damages in my bid.
But there ain't never such happen.
So, huh?
There ain't no such thing ever happened. Liquidated damages.
Oh, well, you might not have got charged, but they put, they put the cost in there and you paid the cost for it.
Bought another house with that money.
You know, uh. My thing is, there was, there was more work on the streets than what you could have contractors to do. And that's why your, a lot of your budgets got blown up. And I was telling, you know, all that, anybody else that was, I was dealing with the same thing, this is what's going to happen. I tried to warn everybody ahead of time, but, you know, you didn't know what it's going to be.
Well, I know Kevin showed me something here a while back, that trend is definitely thirty-five to forty-two percent. I mean, it's, it's as consistent as it gets. And that, uh, it lines up for St. John's County, I can assure you of that.
And Mr. Chair, before Greg leaves, he's exactly right, the order of percentage comes at, he gives a task order. We look at the gross cost of the job. And in fairness to Greg, we look at it and Greg's had this conversation, we look at it and it's, you know, ten or twelve percent, that's, that's the industry standard. Every once in a while Greg would get a phone call. I was like, Greg, where'd you come up with this? Cause I just shoot percentages, he gives a task order, you look at the gross cost of the job. Greg, where'd you come up with this? Well now, I got four survey parties, this is a little complicated, okay, that makes sense, going back to your negotiations. Wait a minute Greg, you sure you can live with that? And sometimes we argue, sometimes we don't. But that's where the percentage comes, we back into it, it just keeps you honest everybody.
So, I just want the board to know. We're, we're doing a good job and I got to stand up for my country.
Absolutely.
You can't help who works for you.
Only Robbie.
We won't hold down against you.
You got clear direction, you feel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, so at this time, David, utility update, I listened to some of y'all's meeting yesterday.
Alright, I'm going to try and keep this really, really short.
Yeah.
They're lined up at the jail, I think Robbie.
Want to give you a quick update on what's going on with Fort White. Um, we have reached a point where both parties agree Fort White wants to go in a different direction. Uh, we have told Fort White, the utility authority is going to be operating for the county. They have said that they want to do it themselves, we've said. Continuity of service for the sake of public health and safety is important. You don't want to do something so drastic that the water gets shut off, you have to close schools, people don't have water. Everybody agrees. So the bottom line is the two attorneys met and agreed that the best thing to do is create a new interlocal agreement that says. We'll work together on the transition. And as soon as the transition's over, we will terminate, it doesn't have to be a year. Do you want anything Joel?
No, it's, it's, in, in contract terms, it's called an accord and satisfaction. It's like, hey, we had this deal, we both agree that we'd like to modify it, so it'll end up being a whole new deal, but it's called an accord and satisfaction. One of the issues we were having, uh, with the town, it's really not their fault, it's just the way it is. Is who's that point person going to be for utilities under their roof? They've identified their mayor. Um, so, uh, that was one of the things we were waiting on, but you're going to get. Potentially by the next meeting, I hope by the next meeting, an interlocal agreement that lays out that transition. Your original interlocal had a one-year lead before termination will be effective. Both sides have agreed in negotiations that that's not necessary. Under these circumstances, since we're getting out of the utility business anyway, so.
And they recognize that the water authority will be.
Yeah.
Operating for the county.
Yeah, 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 so, anyway, that's, that's Fort White.
And we don't know yet how long that transitional period will be, because they don't know yet if they're going to hire somebody to do a feasibility study. So they've got decisions they have to make. We've said, we'll work with you however we need to work, as long as you have continuity of service. And other than that, we had a utility authority meeting yesterday and I'll turn it over to the chairman of the utilities.
So basically yesterday, what we done with. Uh, appointed Shannon to negotiate with Fort White and work out the procedures. And if he could come to some kind of agreement with Fort White, bring it back to the board and we would look at it. See if it's something we can agree with to do a contract with Fort White or whatever their desire is, we don't really know yet till we do some negotiating, but. Uh, yesterday was October first and we are in the process of, utility authorities in the process of. Taking over the utilities for Columbia and Swan County at this point, so.
I think I also heard y'all conversate, uh, about Wellburn possibly.
Yeah, Wellburn, uh, Shannon wants to talk to Wellburn, they have a water system in Wellburn.
Right.
And they have the ability to expand sewer into Wellburn, so. That's what we're going to talk, looking at Wellburn and, uh. Looking at some other projects that DEP has asked us to, to look at too, as far as maybe Three Rivers Estates in Swan County and Columbia County. And, uh, the state park. Uh, going to send the sewer grid or something down there as far as they can.
I just went to the water plant operator's birthday the other day, he's ninety years old in Wellburn. Pasco Jarvis said.
That's one of the discussions we had too, at the meeting, but that one man's been kind of overseeing that and.
I, I told Pasco, he, he said he's ready to retire.
Yeah, he's ready to retire, so.
Let that man retire. He invented water.
Yeah.
So the next item on the agenda is purchase order agreement number two for the course funding. You approved course funding in your budget, there's additional opioid settlement money that's coming. This is the actual agreement with LSF to allow us to.
I move we, I move we approve the purchase order agreement.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed, thank you.
Then my last item is amendment one to the Ellisville, Florida Department of Commerce Rural Infrastructure Grant. This is the Ellisville Road Grant, the RIF grant for five million dollars. All this does, the amendment does is it makes, gives us an additional twelve months, we don't think we need it. It gives us an additional twelve months, but more importantly, it allows Chad to move monies between the different deliverables. Because how it was originally budgeted is not how it's actually turning out, so we can get more reimbursements. And then it lowers the threshold of reimbursement, so we can get reimbursed more quickly. There's no impact on the final five million dollars, it's just moving the money around and making it so we can get money faster.
Most approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, open public comments? Not seeing any staff anymore.
No, sir.
Uh, updates, no updates. Uh, Kevin, real quick, Ellisville roll along, get it. I mean, it, it, you're way on target down there, we are.
We're ahead of schedule.
Ahead of schedule, yeah. It's a, I just noticed the, the B and B ain't doing much, they need to move the grasses.
They're still committed to be open the final quarter of twenty-six, but we, we've done our part.
We come back from the surgery the other day and I made a ride, we threw the road and you opened up, it looks pretty cool.
Yes, sir.
Good deal. They were researching the site plan approval process.
I got you.
Chairman, I have one.
Yes, sir, Rock.
I have a question for Kevin. The water line from Ellisville to Fort White. In the meeting yesterday, the utility authority meeting, it was brought up. That we've been trying to figure out how to. Determine how much chlorine or how to distribute the chlorine at the tanks for nine months. And we can't figure out that process. Then I was told yesterday that they ordered some more parts that were supposed to be there to fix it. And those were the wrong parts. Again.
Okay.
And, and then I was told also that the contractor has been fully paid and including retainage and all on that job. How do we get to that point with this? With this going on, I, I, I don't understand that.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to answer the question with a text.
Okay.
Okay.
Please.
This is a text I received this morning from the contractor. Shelley, who is the sub. Has the thread a lot and is hand delivering to two fold to get the spool machined. So, I'm going to make a long story short. You know, we have a turnover. Internally, without my knowledge, there were some changes made on our side. So the water line was constructed and ran in April, no doubt, we met the schedule. It's not fully functional, but construction met its timeframe. Since then, a lot of it, I was ignorant to, there's been too many shifts in the kitchen, kitchen. Okay? This man was present three weeks ago. I finally said, Greg, you was there, I said, guys, timeout. We're done, all we did was buy a truck. We paid for the truck. Greg, you designed it, Anderson Columbia, you built it. But the truth is, Anderson Columbia sold every lick of it, but there's still the problem. Greg, David, you validate this. It's none of our business guys, we've been in there since April, y'all fix it. The right people got involved, this is a weird deal. You can go in there and manually make it work, but we know that's not what you're supposed to do. They're trying their best to get it fixed exactly right, that text comes, were you copying all that text Greg? So that text come in this morning, so it's my understanding, according to that right there, they're doing it right now, based on my text. But to answer your question, I share the same frustrations, but there were too many people in the kitchen. So you've got your contractor saying, well, look, your guy who's not over here said, well, I don't like the design, so let's do this, okay? So they did, well, it just ain't working. There's no, no way to say it.
Okay, so that person that said, I don't like your design, they worked for us?
They did.
Did you okay it? Did they come to you to okay it or?
They tried it out.
Did they come to Greg to okay it?
How about you David, they're leaving you out of this conversation.
I did not come to me to okay.
So we have somebody, Phil just made us a decision.
Somebody made a decision for the county, yeah.
On this project?
So the only change I was aware of is we went from hydrogen peroxide campaign so that we could stay in compliance with the D and E standards, which were successful.
Well.
Well, you just got to fix it.
It's a.
I'm going to study that one now, I'll have to come back to that one.
So we don't know who made the decision.
We don't know who made the decision, I guess.
Oh, I do.
Yeah, 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 they, they. Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't want to.
You got any, uh, very valid questions, Rocky? I think we can continue that conversation another time, but.
Any other commission?
I was going to ask Greg something, if he remembers. The first time I got elected, I said, Greg. How come it costs so much to do this little bit of paperwork? I remember it's two hundred and something thousand dollars it was. And you said, because that's just what I charge. So, I, I don't. Nah, I thought it was you, nah. I remember that.
Wasn't it senior moments, Greg?
But I, I understood because you said, well, that's just what I charge, well, I mean, you know, that, that's what you charge to do what you do, I don't, I don't know what it cost to do all that.
Okay, motion adjourned.
Yep.
I think we're done Patrick, turn us off.
Thanks, if you need me to.
Yes, sir.